Commission meeting, like to welcome everyone here. We'll do a roll call, Commissioner Pope.
Present.
Commissioner Burris.
Present.
Commissioner Tanner.
Present.
Commissioner Thrier. Commissioner Thrier. He's out with back problems. We'll do our prayer and pledge allegiance. Fire Chief Mander is going to do our prayer and the pledge will be by Commissioner Pope.
If you would, just pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your goodness, your grace, and your mercy. We thank you for all that you provided to each one of us. Lord, we are so thankful for what you've done for this county and, Father, what you were yet to do for this county. Lord, let everything that we say and do today be pleasing to you in Christ's name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join in our pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mander, have we got a guest speaker signed up?
Yes, sir. Mr. David Johnson, I believe, see, he's here. If you want to get up to the microphone there.
Mr. Johnson, if you'll state your name and address for record, please.
Yes, sir. David Johnson, 2375 North Clough Bay Road, Wake Cross, Georgia 31503. Thank you for hearing me. I've got two. First one is personal. The culvert out in front of my house is starting to hold water now. It doesn't drain off and it shows with my next door neighbors at 2365 Clo Bay. His thing that goes underneath his driveway is getting all out of shape and it's got a dirt berm on the other end of it. It's actually higher than all the rest of ours in line. So it stops, the water stops at my yard and it won't go through. We need something to do, probably reset that pipe and then keep that water moving out of there. I've got enough problems with my neighbors growing mosquitoes. I don't need other places to grow mosquitoes.
How far down Cliff Bay Road do you live?
I live one mile from Rouse's Grocery, one mile down the paved road. I'm on the right hand side, White House, Black Top, chain link fence around the whole thing. Second thing is, we've got to stop those darn logging trucks coming down Clo Bay. The lower part of Clo Bay is starting to tear apart and tear down. And I know that country road that I live on is not stressed for those, that type of load. Now, we do have two people, two people that live down there that pull trailers. One guy doesn't bring his home all the time. The other guy, when he's home, he brings his trailer with him. That's the guy that lives down in the trailer house, the trailer house, in the other section, on the lower section of Clo Bay. And he doesn't mind because he brings home an empty, empty trailer. So he's not stressing out the road. But, and I know a farmer lives up the end of the street there. He's got all this heavy equipment. That's not every day that he's traveling on it. During tree hauling time, everybody wants to take a shortcut. Either to stop off at Rouse's to get a drink or a sandwich or something like that and be able to turn right onto 82 instead of having to go all the way down 122 to 82 and then fight traffic to turn left. I know that's the next spot that's going to get a traffic light. But that's the problems that we're having. I just want to keep the heavy equipment off of that road because all your focus is down here in Wake Cross and redoing the roads and getting them. And the focus should be also not tearing up any further roads and that's what I'm here to do.
Mr. Mander, could we get the people to check if we get some low limit signs on that road?
Yes, sir. I'll get with Sheriff's Office and see what we've got out there now. Brooks may know, or I don't know if he knows now, but we can, I'll look into that and see what we can do to address it. Yes, sir.
Also get, if you don't mind, Road Superintend to check on the drainage.
Okay, I'll do it. Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Agenda items, we've got Resolution 2021-07 Judicial Rim Taxable Closure for Collection of Distant Taxes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The resolution I'm looking for, the authorization, is to hold judicial interim tax sales. The pros of this is if you have air properties and nobody's paying the taxes, you don't know who to get ahold of, nobody wants to claim it. It'll clear it up. It's got to go through Superior Court. The judge will determine who has ownership interest and whether or not it should be sold or not. One of the things is, is if you got, and it's mainly going to be useful more like, like I said, air properties and also for, I'll give you one example and one of them that I'm actually going to do, it will be the Lyric Theater. So that, the original Lyric was under a corporation that's now dissolved. So there's really no physical owners because of it, but the property was never divested. And what, and there's an ownership interest with Bill Gross who purchased the old hotel, Fair Hotel, the post office. And he stated that he had an ownership of, that the lyric was included, previous, you know, the owners of that Way Cross Area Redevelopment had ownership interest. The bank has now lost the deed, the loan. So for, the only way to get that, the taxes called up and actually get it back on the rolls is to have one of these sales. Everybody who has any type of ownership interest will be notified. And like I said, they go in front of the judge. And the way the process goes is once the judge determines if he says yes or no, if he says yes, then we advertise it just like we do a normal tax sale. It has to be advertised four weeks in advance. The auction will be, the sale will be on the first Tuesday of the month following. The, once it sells, the owner, the ones who have ownership interest have 60 days to pay back the purchaser their money. There's no interest incurred. They don't get the 20%, they don't get, they don't get nothing. It's just the money that incurred, the taxes to be paid. But from there out, there'll actually be a clear title, clear deed from the Superior Court. Say on the 61st, if no one redeems it, then I notify the clerk of court. They get ahold of the Superior Court Judge. It goes back through and they'll issue a title and a deed just like it was fresh dirt put down in a fresh building. And with this one, there's a, there's a lot of different tentacles involved in this and there's no way to get a clear cut answer of who owns what. But after, after having a sale, it would be. The Downtown Development Authority was in talks with the bank. They was going to purchase it for $25,000. The bank lost all the paperwork, all the loans, the deed, the title, it was, you know, which is, I've never heard of that, but they did. And so the Development Authority's backed away. The land bank's looking at it. There's private investors looking at it. So this was going to be the best way to actually get something done, get the taxes, get it back on the tax rolls, get people paying and actually get it fixed, restored or whatever they're going to do with it. Mr. Gross stated that, well, he paid, he paid an individual $30,000 that he thought he was actually getting the ownership interest in it, which he then, he knew he really, he really wasn't, but he doesn't want the building. He just wants to see somebody else take it over. And he said he's willing to lose his $30,000, which kind of blows my mind on that too. He stated 30,000 is just 30,000. I was like, okay.
So wouldn't he be considered owner if he paid somebody 30,000 of their paperwork?
Well, he paid one person of a dissolved corporation. So there's more people in that corporation and they can't, like I said, they can't find the deed. The bank told the Downtown Development Authority that they give them a piece of paper stating that they own it free and clear and that's, that's not, you know, that's not valid. So that's the reason why they backed away from it. But this, what it does, it gives me the ability to, not only with this one, there's, there's another building that's more likely to come up in downtown. But even residential's and commercials and stuff like that, that there's a lot of ownership interests that nobody wants to claim, nobody wants to do this, it'll just clear it up. And it gives that investor a shorter period of time where their money tied up, with 60 days instead of 13 months.
That whole project down there has been a big problem. Goes back to the Department of Agriculture, I think, with an original loan to the development group. Two, three of those members have passed away and the city can't seem to require the, one of the owners who apparently isn't charged to get it cleaned up. It doesn't meet code, roots falling in. So I agree 100% we're giving Roger the authority to take this under control. It's got to be done. Plus the others, there are others around.
There's others.
I'm not picking on that one.
And, and by giving this authorization, instead of me having to come up here for every single one, we can just go ahead and start the process. I mean, it, it's, there's limited stuff that I'd ever use it for, but, you know, I'm not going to put somebody out of their house that do that. It's not like that. But there's ownership interest, we've got to get it, we've got to get it figured out because, you know as well as I do, stuff just sits there. You can't find out who owns it and it gets to the point that there's nothing you can do.
I had a hard time collecting taxes and my tax commission on that same property. I went through it with them for a long time.
Roger, how long has it been since taxes have been paid?
2015 is, they paid in 14. I had actually was taking, I took that and another property to, to a tax sale along with some other ones. But the ones that they owned, they come in and they paid the Lyric, the Lyric Theater off. And the other one, they just said, we'll, we'll deal with it later and they never did and they ended up selling that until that night.
Over five, six years?
It's been, it's been around at five. And I've, I've been through a bunch of different tax sales and it's just hadn't been able to hit back the radar. But, you know, we got to do something about it.
So Roger, the, what, what was the bottom line? What's the difference between the normal process versus doing the judicial interim? I mean, what, what would be?
How did I know you was going to ask that? So, okay. So the, a regular tax sale is called a non judicial interim sale. And so that goes through, you notify everybody, you advertise for four, for four weeks. The sale's held on the first Tuesday of a month and the owner of record has 12 months to pay back at 20% what they, what the person paid and that's everything. So if there's another tax year comes up and, say if you was to purchase one and you went and paid that, that next tax year, they got to pay that back plus 20% also. The 13th month is when you can do your rite of redemption. So they got actually 13 months total to redeem that property. With this, these type of properties, they've got 60 days, but there's no interest incurred. On a judicial interim, you actually get a title, a deed, you can, that you can actually get a loan. You actually get a title, you can get title insurance. On a regular tax sale, you can't.
Right.
You have to go through a different process of going through Superior Court to get like what's called a quiet title action. After a regular tax sale, to be able to get a clear title to it and be able to get title insurance.
Okay, and honestly, to say that the corporations or the individuals that have had an interest in like the Lyric Theater and different buildings have, has dissolved?
Yes, yes. It was the Way Cross Area Redevelopment Enterprises Incorporated. They called it Wary.
So they, it's been dissolved?
Yes, sir. It's been dissolved. It got dissolved right after, well, actually I think just before the Ware Hotel. The Ware Hotel, the old post office and the Lyric was all on one loan. It was all on one loan. And that's when they bought the Ware Hotel and the post office and they weren't paying attention and, and Mr. Gross said that was also in his, in his closing documents. So we're not sure exactly from there if that one changed hands, but the other two did. And then the post office was sold to somebody else. He rehabbed the Ware Hotel, brought it up standards and codes and, you know, it's now apartments. And now he's got the bun and it's, it's basically going to clear that whole area up where something can be done to that building and bring it back or whatever somebody wants to do. But they'll buy it and it'll be back on tax rolls. And they're not going to buy it, just let it sit there and rot. You know, I don't know anybody that's willing to do that.
Okay, and I know, I know we talking about more or less commercial property right now, but I don't think we need to limit it to just commercial property and?
It's not, it's not limited to that, but when you're dealing with residential properties, those are really, I mean, those are really particular properties that you're going to have to deal with. I mean, there's going to have to face some serious issues with those.
Yeah, but I just didn't want to come across as though, you know, we trying to pick or single out certain corporations or certain individuals or whatever. I know that something need to be done, but you know?
We got a building sitting there, they're falling down, the taxes are being paid. And you got, you got somebody who, who's paid another person 30 grand, but he doesn't want the building. But he just paid it to say, he can say he's got the ownership interest because of the backside with the other title and try to get them out of it. But he still can't get a clear deed to it because the bank can't find out any of their paperwork.
In the bank, you show no initiative to try to get it straightened out.
Not a bit. Not a bit.
It's kind of like, nobody really wants it.
Well, somebody does. It's just you got to be able to, nobody wants it if you can't get a clear deed to it.
Well, okay.
Commissioner, anything else on this item?
Well, like I did say, the land bank is considering it. They're looking at it and so is the Downtown Development Authority. On top of, there's some other people that was interested in getting it in the past to make it a recording studio down in the basement and have musical events up top. So we'll see.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Johnson, do you want to put it on the agenda?
I'm in favor of it.
Mr. Mander, will add that to the agenda by quote? Okay, the next one is the Southern Georgia Regional Commission to provide administrative services for the pending 2021 CDBG grant. Mr. Mander?
Yes, sir. Year under Tab B is an agreement with the Southern Georgia Regional Commission. It is for our pending CDBG application that we are applying for this year. And we had the same agreement, I believe it was last year or year before last, with the Southeast Georgia Regional Commission. They do all the, they did the grant work. They're actually doing the application for us, which, you know, usually sometimes privates will charge, but they're doing it free of charge. And then they'll also, if we're awarded the grant, they will supply the administration and management of the grant and do all the reporting for that. So it's a, it's a good bit of work, but the grant pays for them to do that. It's part of the grant funds.
Yeah, is that total amount on the, on page eight, the 45,000, that's the one time fee?
Yes, yes, sir. That's what they charge for all. And it's, if we are awarded the 750. And then so if it's less, it's, it's pro rata.
And so right now, do we, other than we trying to apply to get the grant now, right?
That's correct.
So we don't really have any idea what we going?
We really don't. We hope we get the 750,000.
What I mean, to be used for what?
It will be used for street paving and drainage improvements over at Emerson Park.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this matter? Mr. Mander, will add that to the five o'clock meeting?
Yes, sir.
Surplus items.
Attached there, you'll see, there's a list of 15 items that we were told to bring back to the commission for, for approval to add to our surplus. This would, actually I think we did it at the end of last year, but because of COVID, things kind of came down to a slow pace. But that's the list that Mr. Cox has put together and we just need approval to add that to our Gov. Deals account to auction those off online.
Any of this equipment, it's not nothing we're going to need in the future, is it?
Not what I, not what I understand. I think we all went through that and looked at each one. I know that Mr. Cox and Mr. Brooks looked at it and that's the ones that we decided that we needed to get rid of at this time. And we were going to use the proceeds of that to pay for the two backhoes that we got previously. I think we got those some, some months ago. But it's to go against that, lessen that cost.
Commissioners, are there any discussion on it?
On this, when we do the surplus item like that, do we have like, I know you say we do with the bid to Gov.
Gov. Deals, yes, sir.
So do we have like a minimum or?
We do, do we put reserves on those? I thought so. Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all.
Is that on everything or just the larger items?
We, we would refer on everything. You know, it's a good item. They said just three items there that really were, and the rest have been well used.
Mr. Mander, we'll put that on the agenda by quote?
Yes, sir.
The next item, the reappointment to the Unison Board Directors?
Yes, sir. We received a letter from Unison Behaver Health requesting that Dr. Fay Mathus be reappointed to the board. This board member has expressed interest that they would like to be reappointed to the board, so.
Commissioner?
Thank you. She's running a serve.
We'll put that on the agenda for approval?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Items. Mr. Pope?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman. Ah, yes. I'd like to talk about the Miracle League and the Recreation Department. My understanding was it's been brought up before and I know it was on SPOSS, but we didn't get SPOSS. My understanding is there's a possibility that they could raise some money and do the field themselves. But they would like some assurances that during their seasons, they at least get first choices. I think that's very reasonable. We are required to provide recreation for all children in Ware County. And the fact that they're going to, that will be a one of a kind facility. It'll be utilized, you know, for those kids and those adults with difficulties and would be available at certain other times for everyone else. I just like to get y'all's thoughts on it, what you be thinking about and see if that's something we consider.
Sounds a good idea to me. Commissioner Pope, Burris, you got anything else to say on it?
I think it's good.
About Miracle League, having choice to feel if they invest money into the field themselves, have first choice?
Yeah, they were having a fundraiser, I think, the Dancing with the Stars, whatever that, whatever they do there was going to help raise some money. And we ended up with a, with a field to use for the Miracle League and the little T-ball people, not the big people. But because of the cost, kind of a joint field, the little people in the Miracle League. But it hasn't gone to any other discussions since SPOSS didn't pass. But, but yes, that was the plan. Whatever money they raised, we put in it and we work it out.
Mr. Mander, that's something you could work with Recreation Department on?
Yes, sir. I know that we, we proposed a few months ago, maybe more than a few months ago, a year or so ago, to convert one of our youth fields in, in doing that. There was some discussion in the community about looking for another location. But based on what the board said, that they would, they knew that they would prefer that location out there so that way they can be included in all the activities with everyone else playing ball and that kind of thing. So it was one of those things, we thought we could at least take one of the fields and convert it to be used for that. And it would help with construction costs because you already have a field there. We'd have to do the artwork and get it prepared to do all the components. But it would, I think it would lessen the cost of construction and actually speed the project up a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
I would think when the Miracle League gets their money, gets all their contributions and then come to the board with their mouth and then get a plan.
Yes, sir.
That was the plan.
Yes, that, that's exactly what it was. Get a budget together on the components, what it would take. And then we, we have talked, I don't know if the commission would want us to, to be the general contractor for the project and then hopefully save money that way.
Exactly.
Bid out each component that needs to be done.
Oh, did the band cages, it never got built, so we built them.
Correct. Yep.
See what you can do on that.
Okay, we'll do, yes, sir.
Chairman Thrier, whenever he called me earlier, said he wanted to be at the meeting. He wanted me to bring up about the fish ponds there at Recreation Department. Maybe open it up to kids under 16 years old with parental guidance, you know, to let them fish. He said he had several calls, you know, wanting to know why kids get fish. I think they're stocked already, aren't they?
From my knowledge, they are stocked. There are signs out there that prohibit that and I started looking into it. I hadn't had a chance to get in touch with the insurance company, but it could be there's a liability issue there, especially if you're allowing kids to walk around and run around that pond. If something were to happen, I'm just assuming. So I don't know from a legal standpoint where that would put us. But I know that in certain other places, I know they do this. I don't know if they necessarily do it on public property, but, you know, where they have fishing rodeos and those kind of things. So I can, I can look in and check and see.
I think the whole purpose was safety, no supervision and liability.
Correct, yeah.
To restrict using, I mean, it's, it's not like a pond, it's just a barbier.
Yeah.
So.
Well, that basically like a detention pond out there or?
Yeah, where they dug up dirt.
Yeah.
Like a barbier.
It's a good, it's a good sized little pond. It's right there in the middle of the walking track.
Right.
If you don't mind, check on that.
I will. I'll see what I can do.
I need a motion for Commissioner to go into executive session.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Sorry.
And just for the minutes, if we can, just state specifically the reasons that we're going into executive session. I believe it's personnel and litigation.
Okay.
Okay. So move, Mr. Mayor. We're going to take a session to discuss that, give personnel.
Can I say on that motion?
Thank you.
We'll be back. We'll be back.